at Burroughs Field on South Road, which was very nice, and we have some very generous[531.38-534.11][S01] donors in our area that contributed to make that happen.[535.28-539.88][S01] I received a phone call from a gentleman concerned about potholes on Route 1, that[539.90-544.11][S01] is a state road, but I referred the matter to Mr. Burt, and Mr. Burt reached out to[545.53-548.38][S01] Connecticut Department of Transportation to see if they could take care of some of[548.40-551.71][S01] those potholes that he had the concern with.[551.83-555.78][S01] I also attended the Quonic Bridge meeting and the RTM budget hearing last night.[555.90-557.11][S01] Clerk at the representative town meeting?[558.53-563.53][S14] The representative town meeting started their annual meeting last evening, oh,[563.65-571.41][S14] excuse me, yes, yes, it was last evening, Monday, April 30th, and they recessed.[571.53-577.53][S14] The next session is scheduled for Thursday, that would be May 3rd, at the Grotton Senior[577.88-583.91][S14] Center at 7:00, and there are, on the website there, in the announcements box on the main[584.38-592.41][S14] web page, there is the current schedule, it's a draft, so in case accounts aren't dealt[592.71-596.78][S14] with or reviewed on the days that they're scheduled, that schedule will change, so[597.28-603.91][S14] we keep it updated on the website, it's also on April 30th, which is the annual meeting,[604.03-610.71][S14] it's one long session that may meet, or may not meet according to schedule, but they[610.91-614.17][S14] could be finished tomorrow or Wednesday if they chose to be.[614.29-618.61][S14] So that's why I say it's draft, yeah, so, but it is available on the website.[619.28-619.88][S01] Thank you.[620.00-621.11][S01] Clerk at the council?[621.23-626.01][S15] The only thing I have, I think you probably received the same information,[626.03-632.41][S15] there was from Mr. Fitzgerald regarding coastal public access to downtown Mystic.[632.53-638.41][S15] He sent a map to you in March, and I didn't have it with me at the meeting for April,[639.78-643.28][S15] but I think that the town manager is quite aware of it.[643.40-645.88][S15] I know he sat, he is not with Mr. Fitzgerald.[646.00-646.84][S01] Yes, we have.[646.96-653.11][S15] And then I also received on Saturday an email from Mr. Rice, excuse me, Mr.[654.88-663.88][S15] Johnson regarding the closure of the transfer station on one day extra, and whether or[664.00-668.28][S15] not there's going to be reconsideration for that.[669.23-670.07][S01] That's about it?[670.49-671.23][S01] Thank you.[671.35-672.19][S01] Town manager?[676.38-678.38][S16] One, I attended the Arbor Day event.[678.50-681.11][S16] Read the proclamation there at the library.[681.23-683.88][S16] Just beat the reins, that was a nice event.[683.90-687.88][S16] Did a tour of different, three different National Guard bases in the state, including[688.00-691.41][S16] ours, so that was very informative of seeing what they do with stripping the helicopters[691.43-694.61][S16] and repairing them, and it was nice to know more about what happens here, good asset
for the community. We have asked Grotton Utilities officially to help with testing at our Fitch Middle School, as well as I've got a list of other building, town buildings that we want tested, so that has been submitted to Grotton Utilities. Let's see. You have a couple of different aerial photos at your spot. First one's a couple pages stapled together. These are both requests received in, both requests received in the last week by the Noank Gardens to purchase property near there. The first one is, if you look at page, I'd look at page two, that area in green, that's roughly the area that he's looking to purchase, is more of a buffer, his property, if you look at it straight up and down, his property is right below that green spot. Between 4,500, 5,500 square feet in that area. He'd have to, you know, the process is you'd have to have a legal survey, have to have an appraisal, all that stuff before we could sell property to him. My first step before we do it, and that would all be at his cost, but the first step is getting feedback from the council whether they want me to start looking into that and going through that process. I wouldn't want them to incur expenses if we didn't think we were, the council was open to it.
So you said the property owner would be the one that would bear the cost of the survey?
Correct, right.[785.40-788.91][S16] And then I reached out to Clint Wright, who's the president of the Noank Gardens Task Force, on both of these requests, and he said they didn't see any issue with it. They've been, they talked to them previously.
I see no reason to object to considering it. I don't know if anyone else has objections. Counselor Atwater?
If you sell them the property, can you do it with any kind of restrictions, or is it a outright sale?
Well, I think at this point it's wide open. Would you have in mind?
Well, I didn't know if you wanted to restrict him from putting a building on it and keeping it open, or?
Well, if you look at, yeah, I went out there to actually see that spot, and it's a pretty good gully there. I don't think it's going to be anything building, but we could certainly, you know, if there's any restrictions the council wants on it, certainly, but you can, any provision you want.[833.53-835.78][S12] I just don't want somebody coming back to us later and saying that we should
afford restrictions on it, that's all.
I'll, just, you, let me, I'll make a note of that.
Is this subject to Noank zoning?[843.49-844.23][S16] Yes.[844.35-848.49][S01] So they would be the ultimate authority as far as the zoning, but I suppose whatever, whatever the council chooses. Counselor Franco?
When you open the packet and it has two pictures, there's one that has like a buffer between?
Well, the thing is, if you look at the yellow parcel lines, it doesn't match up always where, where you know it should be. So basically, he gave two different versions of where he thinks the line is versus where it's showing, so that's the difference. So until you have the actual survey, that's why I said between 4,500 square feet and 5,500 square feet, it all depends on where that survey's at. He believes it's 4,500 square feet, and that's just below that, the top of that buffer is really where the line is, but that's not where it's shown currently. Whereas we know with the GIS system, you often have lines that are off, so.
Counselor Morawcik?
Has the planning department looked at this?
No, not yet. I just want to see if we're even open to it at this point.
Because if, if in the future, the, something happens to the Noank Community Garden, this is a piece of property that I believe borders that, you know?
And, yeah, true, and it will run, and before we consult, we have to send it to the planning commission anyhow. Like I said, that's not buildable there, but, and then, can I mention the second one? The second one I just received two days ago. If you look at it portrait-wise, he wanted, they wanted to add a, buy basically a corner up here a little more, they want to add a garage up there to the north, to the north of the current property. And again, I did run it by Clint Wright, sorry.
Is that the former school up behind it?
Yes.
Are there any other questions on this? Do you need, do you need a vote from us, or what would you like?
I think the verbals, you'll be voting on it later, I just wanted to get confirmation that you want me to proceed generally, so.
Excuse me? Do you want us to go? Okay, so, yes, we'll make a referral to committee of the whole for these two items. Probably together. Is that sufficient, is it together, okay? That's all right, I just want to clarify.
I would do it separately, there's two separate issues.
Two separate, okay. So, yes, we'll all make a referral for each item, 68 Prospect Hill Road, and I don't see the address on the other. Hold on one second, let me get this thing done. You're up right after.
I do not have a, hold on a second, give me one second.
I can't read the handwriting at the top even to know what that says.
15 Smith Lane.
I'm sorry?
15 Smith Lane.
15 Smith Lane, so one referral for 68 Prospect Hill Road, and one for 15 Smith Lane, please, to committee of the whole. Counselor Obray, thank you for being patient.
No problem. One that we have that looks like a seven?
Right.
What did you say they wanted to do with?
To the north there, they want to carve out a piece for the Noank property, added garage there.
Up behind it?
Yes.
I assume this is the boundaries of his present property?
Right, and you pull in through here to the house, he wants to, right up, right up here, add a garage.
But it's not noted in this?
Not in this, so he didn't flag it. First, the next step would be if we're open, and then before we, Friday, say have a survey done, I would say first take this and draw what you're talking about, so you, you know, don't waste your time on a survey until I see that, so.
I would just suggest with both properties that you think about having the original egress remain, and that they don't have the right to have another way off their property. Because both of them with these changes could be statin used to go out through the parking lot.
Right.
Well, that would be part, I assume this would all be part of the referral?
Yes.
Just a suggestion.
No, that's, that's appropriate. Okay, so, Madam Clerk, we have the two referrals, correct? All right, so, department heads.
And then, going to touch base on the transfer station?
Yes, please.
I've had a few questions on it, and I was hoping Gary would be there telling, but I spoke with Gary a little further about it today. So the current plan is, it would, starting July 1st, it would be Fridays and Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Anyone in line by 1:00, we would stay open and operating until they get through, as long as they're in line by 1:00 p.m. And we were talking about, just so you know, some of what that staff does in addition that are there, they're not just taking care of what's there, they also have to go to Mystic, and the staff will still work four days, they'll be doing, the two people that are there, they have to get empty street cans in Mystic every day, they have to, daily, the used motor oil must be emptied in the storage tanks in the area cleaned, used car batteries palletized, other waste sorted and stored undercover at the end of each day. You also have to have time for lunch and that type of thing. We're talking about what would it take to, you know, extend the hours or do something else, you're very limited, one's a non-union supervisor that's limited in what they can do there, and one's, it's considered union duties, so you really have one person fully there, and another person can do certain things. You would have to add one person back out of the two at about a cost of roughly $50,000. If, if you did that, that would get you back the full leaf composting, a third day open, you'd be open three days instead of four, you'd be open from eight to four, and then, so that's basically what it would take. The hard part is, so in terms of any complaints I've received, when we, that first article came out, I think I received two in the last week, I think they put up notice at the transfer station, I've received about six maybe in the last week. I don't know if, other than the email that we received jointly, I don't know if anybody's received any other complaints, but at this point, of course, you know, they're asking to reconsider the budget, but you can't at this point. You know, there's really only a couple options, as I see it, either you let it go for the summer and hope that people adjust their schedules and you see how it goes. You could try for putting in more money for overtime if you had to, to try to, you know, extend hours even further, and if you ran into an issue and people weren't adjusting. Other than that, if you did it right away, you could try selling permits, you know, for hire to, to try to get a third person back, but.
I think we had, I think we had talked about that, and with the number of permits that are issued currently, the cost, I thought you had calculated the cost.
Well, you know, we looked more if you were going to keep, both people keep the four days open, because we sell about 1,000 permits a year, $80 a permit, and we save between $100,000 and $120,000 by applying off two employees, so you'd have a pretty hefty fee increase, but like I said, if you're in between for about $50,000, I think it's the equipment operator position, hold on a second here, equipment operator slot, then you would get a third day with eight to four and, and composting, so you'd have some savings, but it would be a positive $50,000, but not the full, you know, that's a lot more manageable than the full $100,000, $120,000 off a permit fee increases.
Counselor Heath?
Could we fund that entirely with permit fees? For example, a lot of people don't use the.
People are willing to spend the increase, yeah, dollar amount, yeah, and certainly, you know, if you sold 1,000, and what do you mean, 50,000, so you added $50 per permit on, but right now, $80, so you'd have a $130 permit. If you sold all 1,000, you might want to put in a buffer, though, that in case they drop some at the cost, you know, maybe it increased a little more. And I had some people that emailed said gladly pay double, and some said gladly pay $5 to $10 more, so.
Right, right. So, do we want the manager to look at what it would cost if it was coming straight out of fees and to calculate that out for us? Counselor Atwater?
I think you figure if you go to 130 or say 140, it's a rounded number, that's seven individual permits a year, and you might find a lot of people that now buy an annual permit would only buy the permits they need, and so you're not going to raise as much money as you might think, so.
There's a risk.
Right. Yeah, so I don't know if there'd be an easy way to do that. Well, at least if we could have the calculation so that we could say publicly, your fee would be X, and then people would understand.
Well, again, I mean, I had, it's about $50,000 for that position, so, you know, nobody can predict how many less permits you'd sell by increasing the cost. We, you know, we, I don't know if we could put it, we could do a quick sort of survey of people coming in to the transfer station and just see, but, but otherwise, like I say, if you're going to do something like that, though, I say the sooner the better, because once you get in, once you've already sold the permits at one fee, then I think you kind of have to let it ride out and see how it goes, and add some overtime dollars in there, maybe to get some more hours. So now's the time when we're a little more flexible.
So when would we need to have a decision?
I'm trying to think when the permits are actually on sale yet or not. July 1st is when the change happens for hours, but, I mean, sooner the, sooner the better. You won't be needing officially for any decision-making for another month.
One of the letters we got said it's September 1 to.
Counselor Franco and then Zepari.
So, when you first came up with the idea to do this, what was your original thinking of?
Well, it was Gary's idea at first, but he, he still believes that, that, for one thing, we don't, we allow contractor, commercial contractors for dropping leaves off, but not that bulky waste, however, we do have people that probably are commercial that do use it heavily, most, just for the volume, it's likely commercial, they'll, you know, the thought is, they'll likely swap, switch to another location, which will free up some staff time and, you know, some of the busy times out there, people will adjust their hours. I've been, I've only, I've only been out there a handful of times, but I've been out there, it's never been busy when I've been there. I'm sure, I haven't been there on a Saturday, though, so I'm sure it's a lot busier. Gary continues to believe that people will shift their hours when they use it, and like I said, as long as they're in there by 1:00 o'clock each of those days, then we'll get them in, so. It is a risk, though, you know, you don't know until you get into it, and it'll take a couple of months of heartache until it plays out, until people shift how they're using it.
So some of the people that might be upset about it are the ones maybe that are going there numerous times a week, every week?
I think a lot is to do because the composting's going to be limited, that's my feel, a lot is to do with the composting. Because you're, without the commercial, without having all the clippings going there, you're going to have very limited amount that people can take. I think that's the bigger issue, from what I'm hearing.
But if they're upset because, like, they go there routinely and often and weekly, it wasn't meant for that purpose, is that what you're saying? Does it say in, when you get a dump pass?
There's a restriction on the size of truck that can come in there.
So when you purchase a dump pass, does it say, it's isn't for?
I know it's in the rules, I don't know if it's on the pass itself, but I know the rules, and I know I've had people question it, and we've shown them where, and it's on our website, so. I'm not sure where else posted, I have to look.
That it's not commercial, correct?
Right.
Counselor Zepari, and then the clerk.
Gretchen Gauthier, lives with her husband on Tyler Avenue, husband George, they do a lot of, I know they've spoken to me about composting, and they, they were eager, they wanted me to oppose this change. They were caught on the horns of a dilemma of trying to reduce our expenses at the same time trying to serve the people that we've been serving all along. But she put an article in the paper, she put a letter in the paper yesterday, I guess it was, in which she pointed out that we're in breach of contract. All of the permits that we sold, we were sold with the understanding that the dump would be open four days a week, for full days, and now we've cut it down to two half days, and they feel that they've been cheated on the, on the purchase they've made of their permits. So it, I think there's a valid point there, we have curtailed the quid pro quo without giving them their money back, and perhaps we should offer a refund to people who would, who would like to have a refund, or a prorated refund for the rest of this year, dating from the date we curtailed services to the date that that permit would expire.
So we'd like to, many, many people only use it maybe once every week or two, so they're still, you know, you still can put as much volume in.
Well, it's not the volume, it's a matter of, can they get there? Most people are, would be, you know, it's not a matter of, it's a matter of not so much of convenience, but some people work on those days, or some people just can't get there those couple of days. And, and I think that we have curtailed their access to it without giving them an opportunity to get a refund on their money. I would be willing to bet that very few people would take advantage of that, but it would be a gesture of good faith on our part to offer a prorated refund for the remainder of the year that they had purchased their, their permits for.
And the clerk, I believe, has the date, when is the sale day?
The current permits are good until July 31st?
July, so it would be?
I mean, excuse me, August 31st?
August 31st.
So you're talking about July 1 to, so it'd be two months.
So two months.
The new ones go on sale August 1st, I assume, without looking at a calendar, if that's a weekday. So then we would have two months of alternate hours.
That would give us a little bit of time to see how it goes at the two, you know, for the two days a week, you know, as we got into summer and it goes down the first month, we'd have a little bit of time to decide. So, when do they start selling, does it say when they start selling permits for the new?
Yeah, September 1st is when, so it's July 31st it ends, and then the very next day, you buy your new permit.
Oh, okay, so we'd have a little time to, if we wanted to make a change in the permit fee, and we could be polling people during the summer there.
Counselor Parker, and then Atwater and Franco.
I'll yield it, she answered the question.
Thank you. Atwater, and then Franco.
According to my calculations, Joe, if we, if you take the fact that it's open four days and you cut it to two half-days, then that's three-quarters of the time they can't use it, and at $6.67 a month, brings it down to a refund of $4.33 or $0.45 or something, times two months, so we could offer a $9 refund for the two months that they can't use it, and then we're home free.
If that's what it is, I haven't done the math, David, but if you have, that's
Counselor Franco?
I did the math as well, I just came up with a different number.
Did you come up with?
I came up with six dollars and sixty-six cents as a total refund for the two months total.
How much?
Six dollars and sixty-six cents.
The manager said he'll have Ms. Landry do the math. No offense to our counselors, but we'll let the finance director handle it.
The fact is that if he were to do that.
Counselor Overy is next, please. Go ahead.
I must have misunderstood at the beginning, so I apologize for that. Because I thought we had one day it was going to be open, one weekday, and then half-days on weekend. And I think it's, I don't think it's a very good idea to not have one weekday that.
Well, it is on Friday.
Friday, Saturday.
All right, well, you just said Saturday, Sunday morning.
No, Friday and Saturday. And then we're currently open Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. So it cuts out Wednesday and Thursday.
So it's all day Friday?
No, it's eight to one. Though if you're in line by one, we'll stay, it'll continue getting through.
Well, you know, over and above the mulch that everybody wants, I think that's really going to make it pretty difficult for a lot of people, especially contractors that still use the facility. So I think we'll probably get a lot more comment coming about it. We should think about keeping it an open topic.
Oh, it's, it's not meant to be used by contractors, correct?
Right, correct.
It's meant to be individuals, not.
You prefer the bulk of waste for the permit. You can drop off leaves and there's some other things you can.
Counselors Zepary, did you wish to speak again?
Oh, no, I was going to say, I, I just wish to say that you point out it would be a very small refund, but it's the principle that's important. It's in keeping good faith. And, and by, just even though it's a small amount of money, if that's what it comes out to be, by offering it, or showing that we're not trying to cheat anybody, we do have problems with restriction of cash availability, and we're trying to reduce the amount of money we have to raise the mill rate by. And one of those measures is to cut down the availability of the dump. And, and that's something that we've weighed both sides and we've come to that conclusion. But some people says, hey, that's a breach of contract. And I think it is in some respect, and I think you could rectify that in principle by giving a prorated refund. That's all. I've killed it, done.
Doesn't mean other people aren't done. Counselor, we're going to give people outspoken, so Schmidt, Moravsek and then Franco.
And I would say that it would be a refund of ten percent, because it would be two months, which would be two twelfths or one tenth. So that would be ten percent. These people wanted to be able to get compost and leaves and things like that, which will not be available to them at all, even if they came in on the half-days. So I think that it might make people feel a little easier if we gave them a ten percent refund.
Counselor Moravsek?
I'd rather see them get a credit for the next year, rather than to go through a calculations this year and, and all kinds of administrative procedures to pay them off this year. If they're really interested in, in going to the dump, they'll be glad to get the credit for next year.
What about the people who die this year?
Counselor Franco next, please.
Does it say in the contract anywhere that it's subject to change?
I don't know if there's a contract for say, I think it means just generally by having sold the pass that you've entered into a contract. But I definitely know what the wording is on the permit. I haven't seen the wording.
I missed the question, I'm sorry. Would you repeat that?
I was asking if there's any kind of subject change.
Okay. And so he's going to check?
I will check that.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the transfer station permits? So we will hear back from Mr. Burt before our next meeting, I assume?
Yes.
Thank you very much, sir. Item eight, committee reports, personnel appointments, Chairman Heed.
Counselors Schmidt and Moravsek and I met to nominate, to recommend nominating, I've forgotten his name, to the.
Fitzpatrick?
Fitzpatrick, yes. Very interesting individual, highly motivated to participate, and we all agreed, voted unanimously to recommend him.
Which, which board or commission?
The.
Harvey, Harvey Mandelman? Harvey Mandelman?
Right, correct. He attends the meetings already, so he already knows everything that there is to know about it. It was a very enlightening conversation, actually.
Temporary rules, Chairman Heed?
Committee no report.
And Committee of the Whole, I don't know why this is on here, because everything we do is public anyhow, so, nothing new. All right, on to item nine, new business, Chelsea Groton Foundation Grant Library. So Counselor Moravsek, we'll start with you, twenty eighteen zero zero nine two, please.
Chelsea Groton Foundation Grant Library Resolution authorizing the town manager or his designate to seek grant funding from the Chelsea Groton Foundation to provide funds to replace the furniture in the children's activity room, whereas the furniture in the children's activity room is over twenty years old. And whereas furniture offering more flexibility would enhance the ability to meet the needs of the wide variety of programs offered and ages of children served. And whereas the Chelsea Groton Foundation supports organizations in the banks market area through charitable contributions, now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager or his designate to seek grant funding in the amount of six thousand, four hundred and six dollars and forty cents from the Chelsea Groton Foundation, which will be utilized by the Groton Public Library to purchase furniture to the children's activity room. I so move.
Second. Moved by Moravsek, seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on the Chelsea Groton Foundation grant for the library? And again, these are all items we've been through in committee, so if you need to get more details, please see the Committee of the Whole for the corresponding resolution. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of twenty eighteen zero zero nine two say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Counselor Parker, twenty eighteen zero zero nine three, please.
Request for tax abatement, whereas this town of Groton did receive a request for a tax abatement of grand list bill two thousand sixteen dash zero one dash zero three zero three seven three five, and whereas the town of Groton has a tax abatement policy for those unable to pay adopted by the town council resolution on February fifth, two thousand and two, and whereas the town counts, town tax collector did review and verify that a complete application has been submitted and parts of the tax abatement policy has been followed. And whereas the town of Groton held a special meeting on April twenty fourth, two thousand and eighteen to review the application at said meeting and recommended approval of the abatement application at the regular town council meeting, now therefore be it resolved that the tax abatement request for all outstanding taxes for grand list bill, grand list two thousand sixteen bill number two thousand sixteen dash zero one dash zero three zero three seven three five be approved. I so move.
Moved by Parker, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Moravsek. Is there a discussion on the tax abatement request? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. Twenty eighteen zero zero nine four, Counselor Franco, assessment analyst associate job description, lots of alliteration.
Resolution approving assessment analyst associate job description. Whereas the current assessment analyst associate has notified the town of his intent to retire effective June first, two thousand and eighteen, and whereas the job description was last revised in April of two thousand and four and now has been updated to reflect the current duties of the position, now therefore be it resolved that the town council approves the attached job description for the assessment analyst associate prepared in April two thousand and eighteen. I so move.
Okay, twenty eighteen zero zero nine four, moved by Franco, seconded by.
Zepary.
Zepary, thank you. And do you have any questions for Mr. Zagami? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, so moved unanimously. We have many other items here, but we have some constituents, I assume, here that arrived late and they would like to speak. They missed the citizens' petitions, so it's the council's pleasure if you would like to take them now or continue with town business. And at the end, what's your, what is the pleasure of the council?
We ought to let them speak now.
Right now? Okay, so do we need to, we don't need to suspend rules or anything, do we? Hello? So if you'd like to come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, please? And I should probably read the little thing here at the beginning. So give me one second to read this. This is the portion of the council agenda where the council welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less, and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. So if you have written comments, you may give them to the clerk when you're done. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton Town Councilers will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and can respond during responses to citizens' petition portion of the town council meeting. Citizens should make their presentations from the lectern and state their names and addresses for the record. Thank you.
My name is Linda Brown. I reside in Norwich, Connecticut. The reason I'm here today, and I apologize if I get a little emotional because it's in regard to my daughter. On April twenty first, my daughter was sitting in her car, and she was approached by an officer. And the officer's, I can't remember her last, her last name, but Officer one twenty-nine, badge number one twenty-nine, and it was a female officer. She approached my daughter and asked her, can I have your driver's license, insurance? So my daughter said, why? Why do you, why do you need that? She's sitting at a gas station on Route twelve. My daughter told me that the area that she wanted to go to was blocked, so she sat to the side and waited for it to clear up. The officer approached her and asked her for these, this information. My daughter asked her, why you need this information? And she, she said, did I do something wrong? She said, no, but I need your driver's license, insurance, registration. And she's, she's not driving, she's sitting still. My daughter is here, she's, she's probably more of a nervous wreck than I am. And the officer grabbed the door and told her to open the window to get out of the car. And she kept saying, why? What for? And the reason I'm talking about this is racial profiling. And Groton, if, I don't know if you're aware, that Groton has a high number of racial profiling. And so when my daughter refused to get out the car, she didn't say to her why she needed this information, she grabbed my daughter. And my daughter's, you know, kind of strong, when you get a little bit upset, you tighten up or whatever. So she would, my daughter did not get out the car. Eventually, she made her get out the car. And my daughter was, I would like for her to come up and talk, but she's, as I said, very nervous about what has transpired with her. And the reason this hits home for me, because this has happened to me, my, years ago, and I never did anything about it. But now you have all these things going on on social media with police brutality of people of color. And I remember you're used to worry about, oh, she got her license, I'm worried about her going out there getting in a car accident. Now I have to worry about whether my daughter's going to come home to me, and come home to her son. So I wanted to also, I called, it seemed like I wasn't getting anywhere with the Norwich, I mean, not Norwich, the Groton Police Department, wasn't getting anywhere. They called me, gave me a who shot John, I asked them specific questions. Oh, it depends, or if it's this or that. Depends on what? You know? I, I, I live on a straight road. I, I don't want to say, oh, it's maybe this, or if it's maybe that. I'm asking you, the law, tell me the law. If I'm sitting in my car, can you just come up to me and ask me for my license for no reason? Well, it depends. You know, give me an answer. Tell me, educate me on what the law is. I don't want to come get a phone call. As a matter of fact, she called me that night. And I had turned my phone off, so I had to go to work in the morning, and I just didn't want to be disturbed. And she called me, I think on four occasions. And I can't even imagine what could have happened.
You have one minute, ma'am.
So, I didn't know it was my time, sorry. And I, I haven't spoke to the chief yet, the chief hasn't gotten back to me, and, I don't know, that's, that's why I'm here. I also brought someone here from the, the Norwich NAACP, Tamara Lanier, and I'm hoping that she can speak today. I'd appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tamara Lanier, and I am the Vice President of the New London branch of the NAACP.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Tamara Lanier, and my address is five ninety-five New London Turnpike in Norwich, Connecticut.
Thank you.
And as I was saying, I represent the New London branch of the NAACP, which includes the greater Groton area. And the reason why I am here tonight is to firstly support Linda, who happens to be my cousin, and secondly, to talk about the, the Racial Profiling Prohibition Project's report that names Groton throughout many of its reports as engaging in what appears to be racial profiling. And I know that I, in addition to the work that I do with the NAACP, I am also a member of that project, and we do review the data that is submitted by the Groton Town. And I just wanted the council to be aware. I, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the report and what it says, but we are getting, this is not the first time that I'm hearing about a complaint of what people feel is racial profiling in Groton Town. I happened to encounter the chief, and I shared with him a horrible story from a young lady who was afraid to make a complaint. And she reported very, very, very abusive type police conduct. And so I, I know I don't have a lot of time before you, but I just want to say one thing, that people have a right to due process. And when you're encountering, when you encounter a police, it's because of some reasonable suspicion that the officer has. And so the officers, which I understand, if, you know, they, they have a job to do, and the citizens have a right to return home safely as well. But what's important is their constitutional rights, and that should trump any concern. And if there isn't a reasonable suspicion that someone is engaging in illegal activity, it's very difficult to justify why you're walking up to someone and, and, and inquiring about their license or who they are without some form of reasonable, reasonable suspicion. And that's, that's the Constitution. And so I, you know, my concern is I think that police lose sight of that. And I understand the drug activity that's going on in our communities, and I understand the opiate addiction, addiction and the many people dying. But those don't seem to be the people who are victims of aggressive policing. And so, you know, I'm going to make an appeal to you as council people. I know that my cousin Linda has talked about the fact that she's reached out to the city council, I mean, not to city council, the city manager, the police department. There's also a model policy that's pummeled by the Connecticut Post, Post, the police officer standard and training, that kind of details how you're supposed to respond to a civilian complaint. And I think this incident happened two or three weeks ago, and they're still asking questions as to why her daughter was pulled from the car. So there's a lot to be said here. If you're not familiar with the report, it is online at the CCSU's Racial Profiling Prohibition website. They have a website. Take a look at the report. Groton is frequent on those reports for the years twenty fifteen and sixteen, and twenty fourteen and fifteen. And so, you know, the, the point that I want to leave you with is people are complaining, they're going to start filing suits. So if you're not concerned about the humanity of a person who is approached by a cop and concerned for their safety, then be concerned about your taxpayers, who are going to start paying the results of lawsuits. So that's all I have to say to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. So, so just know that as a council, we take these complaints very seriously, and know that the department's preliminary inquiry was conducted by a supervisor, and he has not identified any improprieties or policy violations. The inquiry has included a review of information, reports, and other resources available to our staff. However, to be thorough, Chief Fassaro has directed Deputy Chief Gately to conduct a more comprehensive review of the matter. So know that it is still being looked into, and we thank you for coming out and voicing your concerns to us.
I have a question.
At this time, we need to get back to the agenda, Counselors of Perry.
I'd just like to know where I, I didn't get the citation for the website for this report.
CCSU.
We have, we have, we have the book where it's listed, so we can take a copy of it and have just.
We have, we have that on file with the chief's office. Thank you very much. Okay, so we are back to?
What was the location?
2018-0095. Yep, that's the one we're on. Assessment Technician Job Description? Yes.
When we have something like this, we have an opportunity for response.
We are in the middle of our agenda, and we paused.
But we changed in order to do this, and it calls for us to be able to ask a question if there's a, if we feel there's something that needs to be done, and we're not being allowed to do that.
Okay. Would you like to ask a question? Who would you like to ask the question of?
I just wanted to know the location. I didn't hear where the location of this, of Route 12.
Excuse me. Mr. Burt?
It was right next to the Hookah Lounge.
The what one?
Midnight Hookah Lounge on Route 12.
And as this is an ongoing investigation, we need to be very careful with what we're saying, and especially, we don't want to, we don't want to give too much information at this point because it is ongoing, so.
Okay, actually, my daughter was parked next to Sam's, a local station called Sam, there's a building, and she's parked next to the building. The Hookah Lounge, from my understanding, is in the back on the other side. She was parked at the gas station, not at a Hookah Lounge.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do I have any more questions?
No, that's fine, I just wanted to get the location.
Thank you. 2018-0095, correct?
Yeah.
And we are on Counselor Heed.
Resolution 2018-0095, Assessment Technician Job Description. Resolution approving Assessment Technician Job Description. Whereas the current Assessment Technician Job Description was prepared in September 1995, and whereas duties of the position have evolved over time due to changes in technology and software, and whereas the job's description has now been updated to reflect the current duties of the position, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council approves the attached job description for the Assessment Technician prepared in April 2018. I so move.
Moved by Heed, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Atwater. Any discussion on 2018-0095 Assessment Technician Job Description? Again, this was covered in our Committee at the Whole. Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0095 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So moved unanimously. 2018-0098, Resolution in Support of Senate Bill 103, Permanently Banning the Disposal of Fracking Waste in Connecticut. Counselor Obring.
Resolution in Support of Senate Bill 103, Permanently Banning the Disposal of Fracking Waste in Connecticut. Do you want this whole thing read?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Whereas hydraulic fracturing is a technique whereby rock is fractured through the use of a pressurized liquid in order to achieve an increased volume of natural gas or oil, and whereas fracking wastewater is toxic with no way to filter or treat the water to enable it to be safe, and whereas according to a Johns Hopkins University study, fracking chemicals are linked to migraines, fatigue, chronic nausea, sinus symptoms, as well as permanent birth and high-risk pregnancies. Whereas the state of Connecticut currently adopted a man, yeah, thank you, in 2014 to prohibit the storage of disposal of fracking waste in Connecticut, and whereas Senate Bill 103, currently under consideration, would permanently ban accepting, handling, and disposing of hydraulic fracking, fracking waste in Connecticut, whereas Senate Bill 103 will help to protect Connecticut's portable water, well water, and prevent future financial liability for the state, now there be it resolved that the Groton Town Council fully supports Bill SB 103, and be it further resolved, the Groton Town Council requests that the bill be called for a vote to help protect Connecticut's environment and financial future.
Is there a second?
I so move.
Seconded by Atwater. Any discussion on 2018-0098? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Counselor Atwater, we are on to 2018-0110, Supplemental Appropriation for the Recreation and Senior Activities Fund for Senior Programs.
Resolution authorizing supplemental appropriation to the Recreation and Senior Activities Fund for senior programs. Whereas a treadmill in the Senior Center Fitness Center has failed, and the Senior Center would like to replace the treadmill with a recumbent stepper for use by its members of the Fitness Center, now therefore be it resolved that $2,450 is appropriated from the Recreation and Senior Activities Fund unassigned fund balance to senior programs account 324055400 for the purchase of a recumbent stepper. I so move.
Second. Moved by Atwater, seconded by Schmidt. Is there a discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. Counselor Schmidt, 2018-0113, Appointment of Patrick Flaherty, Harbor Management Commission.
Resolution appointing Patrick Flaherty as an alternate member to the Harbor Management Commission. Resolve that Patrick Flaherty, 965 River Road, Mistig, is appointed as an alternate member to the Harbor Management Commission for a term ending 9/1/2018. I so move.
Move by Schmidt, seconded by Muravsek. Is there any discussion on the appointment of Mr. Flaherty? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved.
Muravsek?
That's okay. So moved unanimously. Okay, so on this one, Madam Clerk, this is Counselors of Perry for 2018-0115. What would you like him to read on this, because it's quite a lengthy?
You really have to read the title, and certainly the resolve, if there is a resolve, but if there isn't?
There is no resolve.
Right. So this, this actually is on our website. It's been certainly advertised there for a couple of months.
We had a public hearing on it.
We had a public hearing on it, yes.
So Counselors of Perry?
It would be arduous, and I.
So would you just read the title, Counselors of Perry, please, and move that?
Adoption of Illicit Stormwater Discharge Ordinance. Be it ordained by the Town Council of the town of Groton that the illicit stormwater discharge ordinance be adopted. I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Zepari, seconded by Heed. And again, as the clerk said, this has been published, it's been discussed in Committee at the Whole. Is there any further discussion tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor of 2018-0115 say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. And if you go all the way back now to page 13, I think is where that ends. We are back to Counselor Muravsek.
Resolution scheduling of public hearing on the Bill Memorial Library 2018 Neighborhood Assistance Act program application. Whereas the town of Groton has received a proposal from the Bill Memorial Library for the 2018 Neighborhood Assistance Act to achieve tax credit savings on an energy efficient proposal for their heating, ventilation, and air conditioning system. And whereas the town of Groton Office of Planning and Development Services supports the energy efficient proposal from the Bill Memorial Library and acknowledges that the post-program review will be the department's responsibility. And whereas the Town Council must conduct a public hearing on the proposed Neighborhood Assistance Act program projects, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council hereby schedules a public hearing on the Bill Memorial Library application under the 2018 Neighborhood Assistance Act program for June 5, 2018. I so move.
Is there a second? Seconded by Parker. Moved by Muravsek, seconded by Parker. Is there any discussion on 2018-0118? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are on to other business. Do any counselors have any other business that they wish to bring before the council?
There are rules attached to the back of this packet, so know them.
Learn the rules?
Yes. Not you.
I will try. I'm just kidding.
Right. Did we need to adopt a permanent chair for the Rules Committee, or?
I appointed already. We found, I found an email detailing the appointment, so we're set on that.
Is there anything else from any of the other counselors?
I believe I saw in here, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Counselor Obring.
I believe I saw in here, we put under the rules that we can in fact have other committees, is that correct?
Yes, there's a couple designated committees, and then you have ad hoc committees if something should come up.
I'd just like to suggest that perhaps we review this as we go forward and maybe establish a couple other committees. So that we can have ongoing review in a different manner of things that we agreed to have this year.
Counselor Parker?
And does that mean we're establishing a public safety committee?
We, now that the rules are adopted, yes, I can appoint a public safety committee. So if you were interested in public safety, I know a couple of you are, let me know, and then I can get that announced at our next Town Council meeting, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. So just shoot me an email, or just give me an email, that way I have record of it in writing, and then I can appoint at the next committee, at the next council, not the committee meeting. Thank you. Counselor Obring?
Do you think it might be appropriate to have an EDC committee?
That's the pleasure of the council. We have, we have liaisons to?
EDC.
The current Economic Development Committee, I believe, already.
I beg your pardon?
We have a liaison to that already, I believe.
Yes, Rachel and I.
That's the pleasure, again, the pleasure of the council. If that's something you just would like to do, we can discuss that. Counselor Heed?
Part of the reason for not having, say, specifically an EDC committee is that if the work is being done in the commission, or the boards and commissions, that we should be going to those meetings instead of having a separate meeting and asking staff to come to that. And also, so not saying we shouldn't do it, I'm just saying that that was the reasoning behind not adopting it, which is not to say we shouldn't have it, I'm just giving you that reasoning.
I assume that the Rules Committee went through this within committee and debated the virtues of individual committees versus Committee of the Whole. I see some nodding, yes.
Well, there were three of us that were in the full Town Council.
And that's a problem with having committees, you have three people making decisions. Go ahead.
No, I agree with Conrad. I mean, we do go to the meetings, but there are, there actually are some things that never come up in the EDC meetings that, you know, are of interest. And just to be able to have the ability to occasionally have a conversation, I think is, could be helpful. Not, not necessarily anything that's every month or something like that, but I agree, we should be at the meetings. And I'll try to get Rachel there.
I'm always there.
She's our overachiever. Anybody else? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Moved by Schmidt, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Muravsek. All those in favor of adjourning say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved unanimously. We are adjourned.